Thank you. Hey, it is 6:00 and we are opening this meeting, executive meeting of the Carlton City Council. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Aitken. You're here. Councilwoman Erickson.
Here.
Councilwoman Skipper.
Here.
Councilwoman Bredeau.
Here.
Councilwoman Warren.
Here.
Mayor Walken.
Here.
Councilwoman Rose.
Okay. The city council will now meet an executive session for the purpose of considering the employment of an employee pursuant to O R S 192 point 6602A. Representatives of the news media designated staff and other persons, other designated persons shall be allowed to attend the executive session. However, all other members of the audience will not be able to attend. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session is previously announced. No decision will be made at this executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room. We will now close the executive session at 6:02 and open the regular session and welcome the audi-- okay.
We have to make a motion or are we in executive?
We will now close the executive session. Be awkward. We'd have to talk to the legislature about that. Alrighty. It is now 7:53 P. M. and we will close this regular meeting of the Carlton City Council.
Resume at 7:00 P. M.
And we will resume at 7:00 P. M. with the regular council meeting. And we are calling this April City Council meeting to order for the city of Carlton. Roll call, please. Is absent.
Councilwoman Aitken. I'm here. Councilwoman Erickson.
Here.
Councilwoman Bredeau.
Here.
Councilwoman Skipper.
Here.
Councilwoman President Warren.
Here.
Mayor Walken.
Here. Thank you. If you all please stand. We're saying the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the blood of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with your peace and justice for all. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
Mayor, we have two changes to the agenda. We're in support of the Provenpound Month and one is on Taylor Snyder.
Okay, and to begin with, we will do the proclamation for Mr. Snyder. Walk over there.
We're going to all this. So, the city of Carlton has a proclamation for you and for who I've interviewed. It's you and the person who took the proclamation. So, whereas Taylor Snyder, a student at Yum Hill Carlton Elementary School, saw another student choking on a popcorn kernel during the school popcorn party on March 18, 2022. Whereas, Taylor quit thinking the lifesaving act dispelled from operating kernel, saving students' lives. And whereas, Taylor responded for his bravery and quick actions on March 30, 2022, by the elementary school students, staff, fire law enforcement officers. Now, there will be mayor, city council, and city Carlton board to recognize and thank Taylor for her courageous behavior.
Thank you. I took a picture, but I want to take another one. It's on either side. Ready?
Thanks, Taylor. Good job.
I got bubbled. I knew that's why you didn't want to do it. You would have been way worse.
I would have been way worse, yeah. We were talking about that.
You could keep breathing.
You did good. You did a lot better than me.
When you think about it, it's pretty emotional, yeah.
I gotta practice on that. One of these days, I'm gonna regret it. Okay, now, the other resolution we have is a proclamation in support of Child Abuse Prevention Month. Yes.
I can read that if you want. You want to read it?
Do we have-- is Juliet's house is-- do we have anybody from Juliet's house here?
We have not seen anyone from Juliet's house online.
But we need to read this, though. Yes. Okay, so this is a proclamation in support of Child Abuse Prevention Month for April 2022. Whereas, child abuse is one of our nation's most serious public health problems, with scientific studies documenting the link between the abuse of children and a wide range of medical, emotional, psychological, and behavioral disorders. And whereas, it is estimated that one in four children will suffer significant abuse before the age of 18 and annually, over tens of thousands of Oregonian children, 78,632 in 2020, are reported to the Department of Human Services as having been abused or neglected, with 11,642 child abuse victims confirmed in 2020 alone, although many cases do go unreported. And this was especially true during the COVID-19 pandemic, when many children were isolated and away from the eye of mandatory reporters. And whereas, the physical, emotional, mental, and financial impact of abuse falls on children of all ages and abilities who come from all economic, racial, and social backgrounds. And these crimes affect many more family members, friends, neighbors, and community. And whereas, effective child abuse prevention efforts succeed because of partnerships created among the state and local law government agencies, schools, faith communities, civic and community organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community, while recognizing that feeling connected to community can be a protective factor against child abuse. And whereas, Carlton is dedicated to stopping child abuse and supporting survivors and their non-offending families while working to prevent it. And whereas, each of us has a role to play in stopping the problem of child abuse as part of this solution by learning how to prevent, recognize, and report child abuse and supporting prevention, education, and empowerment programs for children and youth. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the city of Carlton, Oregon, that April 2022 will be Child Abuse Prevention Month. We reaffirm Carlton, Oregon's commitment to creating a safer, healthier, more thriving community for our children and taking steps to help prevent child abuse through awareness efforts, prevention promotion, and trainings on responding responsibly. We encourage all citizens to wear blue every Friday in April from the 1st, 8th, 15th, 22nd, and 29th as a public statement in support of child abuse prevention. Further, we call upon all citizens to invest in the lives of children by learning what they can do to help stop child abuse through Juliet's House, a community resource, by visiting www.julietshouse.org, introduced and adopted on April 5, 2022. I signed this one, too. And then you'll send that over to me. Got it. Alrighty, moving along, we are at planning commission appointment.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, City Council, we have two applications and one for the one vacancy that we have. Let's see. Morales is with us. And Phil is with us. Sorry, it's Phil's first. I probably said that. I forgot the last name. Our both with us tonight.
Let's see. Gabe or Tristan, do either one of you want to make any comments? Gabe, unmute.
One of these days, I'll get it right. No, I just wanted to comment. For me, this is just an opportunity to serve the community. And also, I think it would be a great learning opportunity. Yeah, I just, I've always had an interest in the local government and kind of what goes on behind the scenes with the planning commission and how things are thought out for the future. So, thanks for considering me.
Thanks. Tristan, did you want to make any comments?
I don't really have anything to add at this point. Thanks for considering my application.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
You're only on one page. You're right.
Yeah.
After we just go through and we're at--
After going through the applications, if you've got one person that wants to make a motion, I think to accept one of-- to elect one of these people, one of these applicants, you can do that. Or you can discuss a little bit before you start making that decision.
Just one thing I want to point out. I appreciate both of you offering and applying for positions. It kind of puts us in an awkward position sometimes of there's two people for one planning commission spot. I think you're both capable and I appreciate you stepping up to volunteer. So, I hope that it doesn't feel like if somebody presents a motion that it's not one against the others. That's kind of what we're up against, you know? And it's just, and so don't discourage you to volunteer in the future. But I just want to point that out. Appreciate both of you stepping up and applying for the vacancy.
Thank you.
We had this when I got on the planning.
Yeah.
I won the coin.
Can you draw a name on that? Both very well.
I won the quarter.
You lost it?
No, I won. I got on, I got on, and then--
Yeah.
I think a month later, dust left. Then the lady that was also, and she just was a point.
Yeah.
So, as like Kevin said, she didn't give up. She liked some case, but then ended up taking on it.
Well, you can do that. Or does anybody want to make a nomination?
I'll make a motion to appoint Gabriel Morales for the planning commission.
That's good. Been moved and seconded. We have a vote?
Roll call, Bill.
Do we need to do roll call? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Yep.
Aye? Okay. Gabe, you're up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tristan.
Thanks, everybody. Don't worry, it's not going to discourage me from being around.
Good. Thank you. Okay. We're going to move into the section of citizen comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any items off or on the agenda. When invited by the mayor, members of the public should come forward, state their name and street address, and direct all comments to the mayor. Comments are typically limited to three minutes unless additional time is allowed by the mayor. We'll start with any items that are not on the agenda. Is there anybody in the-- visiting us that would like to make any comments? Okay.
Oh, sorry about that. While I'm here, I did have something.
Yes.
I was just curious if there was a final decision on the covered patio area in Hon Creek Park?
Gabe, I owe you an email. I will definitely get that to you for the same morning.
We'll, yeah. I should have added that you can ask questions here, but you, we won't discuss. And the response will come to you after, after the meeting from the staff.
Gotcha. No worries. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, that was items not on the agenda. B, does anybody have any comments on any items that are on the agenda? Hey, everybody's being quiet. The public comments portion is closed and we will move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm moved to approve the consent agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ordinances, resolutions, discussion, and action items. The first item, A, is community grant programs.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, City Council, you have two applications. One of you for community grants. And I believe we have one representative that moves from one of the grant applications. I believe it represents the Homeward Bound Pets.
Okay, so Ronnie.
Yes.
You're up.
Well, I want to thank you all. You are so generous every year to Homeward Bound Pets. And we are extremely appreciative of that. Homeward Bound has had a very tough couple of years at our shelter. With COVID, we, of course, do the licensing for Yum Hill County for dogs. And we do the kenneling for the sheriff and MAC PD. All of our animals are from Yum Hill County. And with that said, the dumping of dogs, especially in our county, is off the charts. Most rescues and shelters ship in from out of state. We do not. And so, they have a lot of pets and kittens and puppies and cute things that adopt quickly. We will not change our business model. We will continue to help our county. With that said, our adoptions are lower because the animals that we take in are usually not in great physical health and oftentimes emotionally devastated. So, they're staying with us longer. Where you might see five, and we get cats, too, with the same thing. But I'm just going to talk dogs for a moment. We might have five dogs for adoption, but 12 dogs and the wings being worked on. So, we are proud that we help our community. Specifically, from each city, I can give numbers, but they're not real numbers because so many animals are dumped that we don't know where they come from. So, we do know for sure, we took in nine cats and five dogs from the city of Carlton. Our average amount that it costs for us to get a kitty ready for adoption is $326.50. And for dogs, it's $425.50. And that's if they don't need additional medical care, if they don't have an extended period of time. So, we know for sure, we spent over $5,000 from Carlton. But with all the animals that came in that are dumped, we don't know if they're from in-county, outside of county. It's been very difficult. And then, when we call on help from other rescues, they all say, oh, we just got a shipment in, we're full. So, it's been frustrating for us, but we keep doing what we do. Many of our animals are unaltered, haven't had medical care. We helped a dog out last year that came in with three gunshot wounds. We've helped animals that have been terribly abused. That my staff shows up every day to make sure that they care for them and they get their care, and we get them forever homes. So, with that said, we also get cats that are dumped that come in and they, we find out later that they're filled with cancer or whatever. And Homeward Bound does right by these animals. So, that's just kind of my little thing for Homeward Bound. We are asking for help for our shelter medical fund in the support of $2,500. We have been working the last two years designing a new shelter. We have an architect that's been doing that pro bono. And I've learned more than I ever wanted to know about building a shelter, which has included, I had to get FAA approval and soil testing. It took me an inch, a year to find an engineer for the water line. We are very close to submitting those plans. And this summer should launch our capital campaign. So, very excited. Homeward Bound needs to be here. We're losing our buildings. They're literally not, they're, some of, one of them's 90 years old. So, we are working very hard to continue to care for the animals. We got licensed last year. Every shelter has to be licensed. We were licensed. And that's kind of, kind of what I got. Does anybody have any questions? A hard time hearing you guys.
Well, yeah, the work that you do is really vital. Two questions I have. One is, since Homeward Bound took over the responsibilities of the animal control, so to speak, that the county was doing, do you receive any, any subsidies for doing that at all? Or did it just get dumped on Homeward Bound?
No, yeah, we do have a line of income coming in for the shelter, for the kenneling. However, we're renegotiating those contracts this year. We've had them since 2017 because the cost of everything has changed since we took them on. Food prices are off the charts. Our food donations are down to almost nothing now because food costs are so expensive and our animals are staying so much longer. So, costs have gone up substantially. So, we are reworking contracts this year. That's when they're ready to be reworked, to try to negotiate a little bit more pay to help offset the money that's gone up. So, with that, we're not getting rich, but we do have a line of income for the shelter. And, and then the same with the licensing. We license for Yum Hill County dogs. That is a line of income for our organization. It pays for the position and all the mailing and all the admin expense, paper and ink and all those things. And we do have a line of income coming from that as well.
The next question is, when I realized, you know, we live in a smaller community. I come from, you know, a few years ago, moved out from San Francisco.
Right.
Which larger community. But they have, they had organizations. In fact, we got, our dog was rescued from an organization called Grateful Dog Rescue, which the city that has their animal control, if, if the animal can't go to SPCA because there's behavioral or medical problems, they look to these other organizations to take the animal and do rehab, like you're discussing.
Yeah.
Is, are there any of those types of organizations in the area?
We have a list of organizations that my shelter manager reaches out to. You would be astonished. And most of them, when we call, they're full. So, like, if we happen to get a breed dog, we're calling those rescues. It is shocking, you know, how many, everybody's full. It's a crisis in Oregon. We get probably, my shelter manager gets 50 to 100 calls a week and probably 30 to 50 emails from people wanting to surrender. And we don't have room for surrenders. We're helping Yum Hill County dogs and cats that are from our county. We get calls all the way from Bend. We give them the names of all these other rescue shelters. And all we hear is, okay, they're full. Okay, they're full. And it's heartbreaking because then they get mad at us, but we're, we're sorry. Like, we literally are filled to the gill. And every place we call, it's very rare that they have a place for one of our pets to go in.
Does Homeward Bound run a foster program?
We do have a foster program for dogs, though. It is very difficult to get fosters. Our dogs come in and, first of all, we try to, we don't know their history. So, my staff is trying to figure that out. And once we do, well, a people call from apartments and they're, they, we can't have big dogs go in there, right? And then they, we, they don't, when we ask, and most of our dogs are middle to big size. And our people will say, well, I've got chickens. And we're like, well, this dog is prey-driven. They, they can't be around livestock. Or they have to be an only dog. So, that has been very, very difficult. Getting fosters.
Here.
Yeah. What's that?
You talked about your, you said, helping get all the paperwork. Where is it going to be built at?
I'm sorry, say that one more time.
You talked about building a new shelter. Where is it?
So, the, the building plans are very close to being submitted, submitted to the city of McMinnville. We just got approval for, we have to put in a new water line down Loop Road and connect to Highway 18. The water line ran down there. We've had FAA approval. We have septic approval. We're getting all these approvals, getting engineers to draw H vac plans, all the things that go with it. But our, our architect is very close to submitting the plans to the city. And then, we have in our building fund, it's very exciting. Even before we start the capital campaign, we just hit $2 million in our building funds.
Great.
Is very exciting. The reality is, we don't know really how much we're going to need until we can get it approved by the city and we put it out to bid. We're thinking probably about 4.5 million.
Was it a different address than where you're at right now?
Pardon me?
Is it going to be on the same property?
Yes, it is. We will be, right now, what's happening, if you drive by, you'll see two little houses on the back of the property. Those are going to be our temporary catteries. Those are being, they're being worked on right now. We have cleaned up the parking lot, cut blacktop out of there, gravel down. We're going to be bringing in the construction trailer and then another unit for a cat ISO room. The kennels will stay open during the process. So, we are working right now, we're getting ready to put a temporary power pole up with a bid that was just accepted and approved by my board because it has to run power to those temporary catteries and to these temporary office structures to stay open. Otherwise, we'd have to close. And we, we can't do that to the community. We've got to stay open during construction. So, that's had its own set of things to put together. But we'll be, we'll do it, we'll do it.
Thank you, Ronnie.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
Do we have a motion on the, on the grant?
I just have a quick question for Shannon. Not you, Ronnie, sorry, for staff. Thank you. The YCAP application, do we have anybody from YCAP? But it says they have never applied for a community grant previously. Is that just a, feel like if my recollection, should we not award it to Homeward Bound and YCAP last year? I could be wrong.
Ms. Martinez, can you answer that question, please?
I can answer Homeward Bound.
We only awarded to Homeward Bound last year. YCAP was in a previous year, though, that might be what you're thinking of.
Yeah.
We have money in the budget, et cetera.
Yeah. I think all we're voting on now is some Homeward Bound or a vote.
20.
Both, okay. So, and then YCAP on 1200?
Yeah.
And then, is there anybody here from YCAP? Speak. No.
So, I make a motion that the city council award Homeward Bound Pets and Yum Hill Community Action Partnership, community grant, and authorize the city manager to issue the requested fund amounts.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You guys are amazing. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. Bye.
Take care. Thanks, Ronnie.
Thank you. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Hey. The next one is ordinance twenty-two-two-seven-two-seven, modification of chapter two-one-four of the Carlton Municipal Code.
City Council, this is the ordinance that we've been discussing related to the tourism committee that we sought clarification last month. Um, through that clarification that we received from the city council, you have before you uh, an order amending the Carlton Municipal Code for the tourism committee essentially removing it from the ordinance at this point in time.
There any questions or discussion?
I do wanna also add that the volunteers that we had talked about when considering this have already met twice and we made a third time on Thursday and I'm very excited and I'm looking really hard.
Sounds like a good change then. Hey, do we have any discussion or a motion?
I'll make a motion. Um, I move that we approve uh, ordinance number twenty-two-two-seven-three-seven uh, amending Carlton Municipal Code, Chapter two-point-one-four relating to administration of the tourism committee.
First reading.
This is the first reading for that?
First reading, yeah.
Yes. Thank you. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Councilor Eklund?
Aye.
Councilor Erickson?
Here.
Aye.
Councilor Brunnan?
Aye.
Councilor Skipper?
Aye.
Council President Ward Mullen?
Aye.
And Mayor Watson?
Aye.
So, I have a question. If it's, if it's all approved, we don't need a second reading for it? It's approved unanimously, that is.
Okay. So the motion is approved.
Yeah, so Carlton allows you to skip through on your first reading if you have a unanimous approval. Uh, in this instance, I believe this qualifies as unanimous. Even, even though you have one member who is not here, I believe.
Hey, so that has been approved. Righty, Han Creek Pump Station Force Main Paint Order.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'm actually gonna invite Gordon Rogue to talk about specifics of this change order. Gordon, are you with us this evening?
Can you hear me now?
Thank you, Gordon.
Muted himself again.
Okay, can you hear me now?
You can.
Hello? Okay. Okay, so the I, I'm getting horrible feedback.
He's getting computer. Yeah, one of the audio.
Okay, how about now?
I can hear you.
We can hear you.
Can you hear me now? Yeah. Hear you. Okay, how about now? Ah, I can hear you now. Okay, sorry for the, all the glitches. Okay, so this is a change order that's going off on the Han Creek Pump Station. It's for upgrading a portion of the existing force main from uh, six-inch cast iron to an eight-inch PVC and replacing uh, the receiving pipe, which is eight-inch gravity and upsizing that to twelve-inch gravity. Uh, there's several reasons for this. One, the existing pipe is in suspect condition. The force main is cast iron. It's really old. Um, and the gravity line is clay pipe that is having problems all over town. So it's in poor condition. This does increase the capacity of the pipe. And ancillary to all of that, the force main portion of this is in the intersection of Pine and Main, which is where ODOT will eventually be doing their project. They will be digging out the road. They tell us to a depth of four feet. The existing force main is at three feet. So if we don't move this now, we need to move it later. And so this is just good timing to do this project. Uh, the cost is two-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand-four-thirty-seven-fifty cents. Now, you're gonna see below that there's a different price shown. And that was put into the packet by mistake. There was a update to that. The contractor had forgotten to put in the traffic control required for night work, which is required on the portion of the project that is on the ODOT highway. So the two-sixty-four amount is the correct amount. So, are there any questions?
We do, we do have the capital improvement. I would not bring you a recommendation. I have to ask. I, I have to tell you the next month.
Somebody hear you say that, it's gonna be hell over here. Okay.
So Gordon, you're saying it's on Main and Pine and Main Street, right there at that intersection?
That's a portion of the project. The entire length, the entire length is on Main Street from First to Pine and then on Pine Street from Main to Grant. So the total length is six-hundred-and-fifty feet.
And, and you say that right now it's three feet, you need to move it to four feet. So that pipe of assuming turns and heads west on Grant Street, is that correct?
The gravity main, yes. It does.
So is, is the pipe there on Grant Street? I mean, is that if we, we're digging deeper on Main, is Grant Street also then need to be at the same time to make it all, you know, slow downhill here? So, or how is that all gonna?
Uh, no, so there's two portions of the project. One is a force main, so that's a pressurized pipe, sort of like a water line. And that doesn't need to be deep. And that's typically built at, at three feet deep. But that's the portion that's gonna be underneath where ODOT's gonna work. So we need to make that portion deeper. The gravity main, which is on Pine and then turns on the Grant, is already deep. So that one doesn't need to be changed. So it, it won't affect the gravity flow from Pine to Grant.
When does, when is it scheduled to be done?
They'll be doing the, this work uh, this, this spring. Same timeframe as the Han Creek Pump Station.
Will the road be closed?
They're doing, on Pine Street, uh, they're gonna be doing the work at night. So during the day, the, the road will be open.
Thank you.
Good concern.
So then, will the flaggers be out there twenty-four hours a day or just sending people?
They'll be out there when they're doing the work. And then at the end of night, they will close up the trench such that it's drivable.
Yeah. Will anybody, you know, along that road, Main and or Grant or Main or Pine will be disrupted at all? Uh, there are, you know, apartment or two around there.
Gordon, the question is, will there be any service disruptions to citizens while this work's being done better?
I think there's two services that are being uh, redone as part of this. Otherwise, uh, no other service lines are being affected. So they'll have a little bit of effect, uh, but not a whole lot.
So this is part of, this is a changeover to the Han Creek Pump Station, which is obviously further east out of town. So this portion between First and Pine and Grant Street is just a separate thing from the Han Creek Pump Station. The same company that's working on the pump station, but they're gonna come west into town and replace this because it was noted as needing to happen.
Well, I'll, I'll say yes and no, and I'll tell you why. So Han Creek Pump Station is in and of itself a single place, and that's, you're correct, east. But the force main serves the pump station. So the the force main is typically considered integral to a pump station. Um, so that's why we decided, it was uh, one of the reasons why we decided to put this change order on the Han Creek Pump Station because the force main is, is really part of the pump station, even though physically it's in a different location.
Follow-up on that?
The force main, without the pump, without the force main, the pump station can't work.
That makes sense. But my, my question, I guess I'll follow up with that, is if any other portion of the force main between First and the Han Creek Pump Station being replaced? Or is that already insufficient pipe? And it's just this one section?
Uh, it's not being replaced and probably in the future it needs to be. But at this time, this is what we thought we had the, the funding to be able to do. And this was the more critical part of it.
So this is kind of not towards, you're out, the worst section of the force main?
The more critical because uh, it's underneath the highway. So if it, if it fails, uh, the consequences are bigger. So more risk involved.
But if the pipes were gonna, could you just move it down or is that something that's not possible? Like one to three inches?
I didn't quite hear that.
Gordon, the question was that if the, if the pipes were in good condition, and we did hear you that they're not, but if they were, could they be moved down a foot to the fourth foot level versus having to replace everything down four feet? Did I get that correct?
Okay, that, that would be difficult construction to do. I'm not quite sure how you would do it. It uh, is potential, you could dig a, a trench alongside it, then cut the pipe and move it down. But that has a whole bunch of risks of the joints coming apart. So I think it would be a very, very difficult um, construction activity to try to do.
Last, follow-up, the last question I'll have, Gordon, is, so with the understanding that, you know, we'll pay, I understand the need to replace this, I'm not questioning that. I guess my question is that, you know, we pay seventy thousand dollars in asphalt and grinding inlay for ODOT to come and rip that all out and whatever that timeline looks like in two years. That seems a little questionable to me, but.
Yeah, timing, timing is tough. Uh, not all of it will be ripped out. The intersection of Pine and Main will be ripped out. Uh, the portion of it that's on Main Street from First to uh, Pine, that should stay. Uh, the portion that is south of Main Street on Pine, I don't know how much of that, that ODOT's going to actually improve.
Thank you.
Then from your best uh, scenario on this, basically, these pipes will last until ODOT goes in there to do the complete realignment where we're not having to dig it up, pay for that and then re-dig up?
You mean the new pipes?
No, the existing pipes.
Oh, the existing pipes? The existing pipes, if we just, if we just left them. Go ahead.
Question is, the existing pipes won't last until ODOT starts their work on the whole realignment project?
That's a risk. The clay pipes in town have occasionally collapsed. Uh, we've had that happen on the highway. And we had it um, on Scott Street. And I think one other location. So they, the clay pipes, we don't know when they're gonna fall apart, but they've already started to do that around town. So I can't tell you if they would last until ODOT does their work.
Thank you. Gordon, I've got one last question, I promise. Um, is it typical for an excavation company who's already in town doing work at Han Creek to charge a mobilization fee? Like they're already, they're already here. I, I obviously they'll probably have to bring in different equipment, I'm assuming.
Yeah, that's what it's for. That's what it's for. It's the different equipment.
Okay.
Cause there, the, the pump station is, you know, very different construction than piping. So they'll have different equipment. They'll have probably what they call a coffin that they bring in that to support the trench that they wouldn't need otherwise. They'll have uh, large excavators for digging the trench that they wouldn't be, bring into town otherwise. So that, that's what that mobilization's for.
Thank you, Gordon.
I have one other question.
Okay.
From my understanding, all the other pipes are on, are old as well, right? So if we have a concern about this section, like, wouldn't it make sense to think about, about repairing the other pipe as well? And I understand that we are working on this pipe because of the concrete section, but yeah, I wonder why should we just focus on this area and want to repair the other pipe? It's also old. I guess I'm only gonna hold on to to get my question, but are we putting priority on that, that, just because of the concrete, essentially?
Gordon, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, my understanding is we're focusing on this section right now because of all the critical um, elements that Gordon talked about, the fact that it would have to be done with ODOT, the fact of this age, the fact that it could fail at any point in time under the highway. Um, it's a significant um, issue. We are prioritizing the clay pipe. It is one of our federal agenda items to attack the uh, Grant uh, Street Clay Pipe that is also failing in certain areas. We're looking for federal funds at that time in time, or at this point in time. And we also have a large amount of sections of clay pipe. And we also have a large amount of sections of clay pipe listed in our wastewater master plans as priorities. So as we continue to build up our reserves and work through our capital improvement plan through the budgetary process, we can hopefully proactively address those failing pipes before they fail. Gordon, would you add anything to that?
Yeah, that was pretty good.
Wouldn't the usage of that, whatever things like sorry, invoke instead of just one section? Like Brad was saying, maybe we could, I don't know if we said that, but if we could wait and show ODOT Commons may very likely work on a bunch of, just one section. And perhaps pay a premium is because they're working this process.
I will tell you from my perspective, the challenge is funding all at once. Gordon, maybe I'll speak the logistics about it, but just the section of pipe that we're looking for on our federal agenda to achieve and hopefully obtain some federal monies, earmark monies for. I might be missing a project, so correct me Gordon, but I think we're at 2.2 million, just for that section of pipe. Gordon, am I incorrect?
I don't have the number on the top of my head. But with regards to the logistics, the way ODOT runs their projects is that they will do their design and then they will contact the municipalities and the other utilities and say, hey, your utility is in conflict with our design. You need to move it. And if you wait until you get that letter, then you're in kind of a schedule panic because you don't have a whole lot of time. Uh, so they won't add it to their project. You as the municipality need to move that utility. So if you wait until their project comes, then you're, you're actually going to be behind the ball. And it's going to be, it's going to be difficult. I ran into this with a couple of other communities where they found out as ODOT was doing the, their design and it didn't give them very much time to respond. That's just the process that happens. So this is, this is, this is actually a very appropriate time to be doing this coordination wise.
We wanted to confirm our federal request for the section of pipe is that 2.2 million for that section. All of the clay pipe replacement program that is listed in the wastewater master plan at 2018 prices was at 5.2.
Maybe we have right now, so.
We approve this tonight, are they going to approve this pipe tomorrow? Will we get a good price?
Gordon?
Well, I didn't quite hear that.
We approve this tonight, approve the piping tomorrow so we can keep this 30-day price?
Oh, if we approve this, it'll get signed and they'll, they'll be moving on it. They've actually already been out looking at the site.
Okay.
In today's world, materials go up and down, morally go up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
With no notice, they just go up.
We need a motion, guys.
I move that the city council accepts the change order of $264,370 in taxes for this concrete pump station. Number one.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, Gordon.
Thanks, Gordon.
Okay. Unless there's any other questions, I'll sign off.
Gordon, do you want to talk about the contract extension for a change order that will be a no-cost change order?
See, there came another question. So, uh, there, there is a no-cost change order that is going to come through. And that has to do with an extension of the schedule because of the delivery delays that are occurring for specific parts of the project. All of the precast concrete, uh, so we have a vault and we have a manhole that won't be even delivered until sometime in May. The pump is actually supposed to be delivered later this month. And the generator is actually scheduled at the moment to be delivered sometime in September. And so if we get the generator by September, construction can't really be complete until probably early November. And so we're going to run through a schedule change order that is a no-cost change order to the city to extend, extend that schedule.
We won't be, we won't be seeing it come through here.
No, you, you, you guys don't need to see it because there's essentially no impact to the city except that things are delayed and there's nothing we can do about that.
Okay. Thanks, Gordon.
Okay.
Good evening.
All right. Thank you. Bye.
Bye. Hey, moving on to item D, Council 2022-23 Goals.
Thank you. Mayor and City Council, there's three documents in front of you that I hope helpful and not just confusing. Uh, there's the intent of providing the three documents shows the evolution of taking the work that you had done in format that was in front of you last year, moving it into the format that we talked about. So the first document is exactly, looked exactly like what you thought.
Right.
It's got the goal, three goals and the strategies underneath it and actions underneath. The second document takes the new foundational goal format that says you have some additional goal that won't necessarily change year to year of effective and efficient infrastructure, housing and mobility, citizen involvement, good governance and financial sustainability, and shows how the strategy that you were familiar with seeing last year and those actions fell underneath those goals. And it also incorporated the plans that were associated with those goals to show how those plans interacted. The third document, we generally were working back from that we're working from, takes out those strategies and talks about the strategic outcomes. I know the action numbers correlate better to the strategies and we can work on cleaning that up this year, but I wanted to show you the evolution that we did. So if you're like me and you want to go from document to document and make sure nothing was left out and checked out, you can do that and see it for yourself and be reassured that nothing was left out. So documents three is really what we're going to be working from. I'm going to, on approval and adoption of being comfortable here, I'm going to continue to condense these and hopefully get them down to one document that you can see them very quickly at a glance and include to track the, the type and status of the action item underneath.
But basically what we're approving tonight is the goals themselves.
The goals themselves. And you'll make an arrangement that will get a copy that's not just a copy, but somehow limited, whatever.
Same as we've had. So what we are approving here tonight are the actual goals that we set for.
The goals and the actions.
The goals and the actions that we agreed upon at the goal-setting session. Okay. Is there any discussion about those or do we have a motion to approve the goals as we, goals and actions as we set them at the goal-setting session? Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the goals that were set forth at the goal-setting session.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And moving right along to the city charter discussion.
Thank you. Mayor and City Council, one of those action items was to look at updating the city charter. In front of you on the table is a document that was not put in your packet because Nicholas and I met prior to or after your packet was released to talk about a strategy to update and modernize the city of Carlton. In your packet, would League of Cities Model Charter as well as the current city charter? And so what I, I've done in working with Nicholas here, and I provided a paper. The first column was the city charter section. And any corresponding, the next column, any corresponding LOC model charter section and the recommendation. Recommendations to keep current city charter language are in gray. Recommendations to adopt model language are in grays. And recommendations for discussion are in gray. And there's one recommendation for complete removal because it is covered by state law. The overall recommendation is to modernize the city charter with, with a model language that is more concise, while considering specific provisions of the teachers that that serve the city of Carlton. So I don't know, Nicholas, if you want to chime in at this point in time. My thought process is that depending on how far we've been able to familiarize ourselves with the Elops and target and current charter, that we would look at the areas that were keeping charter language and adopting the model charter. I will refer and leave the discussion until months. We do have a timeline and we are going to get it onto the ballot. We should probably have things by my background.
For the record, if you do modify the city charter, it's something that needs to be on the ballot for the voters to, to have a say on, which is where the timeline comes from. Essentially, we have to have this ready to go in time so that we have a, a actual ballot measure that can be there in November. And there's a, a lead time on those ballot measures that we have to meet. It's, I believe it's somewhere in the ballpark of 30 days, but I'm not certain on, on the exact lead time. So essentially we have a few months to, to kind of discuss it and to finalize something before we have to sort of move forward with drafting language for the ballot measure.
Yes, we might both, sorry, go through some of this tonight or a work session I got through it. So we could, again, depends on how often on your, you are with the two documents. If you were familiar, I didn't want to talk forward or progress, I wanted to make sure you have that up. If you need an additional time, we can work on it next meeting.
I think I need time.
Yeah.
It's not, it makes a lot easier.
I would prefer to have, I think, time to look at it.
Because there's some sections in here in this document that you pointed out that, that it's recommended that we do have further discussion. I had noted a couple myself, but some of these I hadn't, you know, paid that much, as much attention to. So I want to go back and really study it.
And one word of caution about the items for discussion. It's generalized notes, so you're not going to have full description. So I would want to have a full discussion with Nicholas and a couple of us together to talk about what did you mean by, and so that we can have that dialogue.
Yeah.
So just keep that in mind as you're reviewing and saying for discussion.
But that, I, I think we probably need to take some time to familiarize ourselves with.
It is also, it is also worth noting that the, the model language or the League of Cities model language that is provided, it's not set in stone. So if there is a, a manner of stating something that is modified from the model language, that's something to discuss as well or to potentially apply. So in, in essence, this is, the discussion is to rewrite or modify portions of Carlton's city charter. And the League of Cities model language is, is simply a straightforward and easy way of approaching terms for this. But if there's something that this council has like a burning interest in changing and the League of Cities language is, is just not sufficient, that's something that we can also discuss and, and potentially add into changes.
Great. Thank you.
Ultimately go in the voters pamphlet for voters.
Whatever decisions we make about changing or proposing changes will go into a voter pamphlet and be voted on. But this charter itself.
The, so the, the process in this case, I believe, would be that the city would request a, essentially that this, the citizenry approve or adopt or and adopt a new city charter that is a, a full language rewrite in the ways that we would, things we've changed. So it would be a new document that essentially gets overlaid on top of the old one. And that would be what is approved in the ballot measure because you have limitations on how much you can write. We would have something likely more precise in how we describe it as this is a modernization of the city charter. Just for the, the purposes of the actual ballot measure. What we would end up doing more likely than not is having some sort of a, a draft that would be the, the final document available on the city's website or in, in the city council packet that the public should review and see before it goes to ballot as well.
I have a topic, but related to this, but so in advance of it going out for a vote, I'm assuming we're going to probably do some outreach because otherwise it can be the, well, why do I want to change that? You know, I mean, I don't know, they could have all kinds of questions.
Yeah, definitely. Do we need to take any action then tonight?
No, not if we're going to talk about it in the next meeting.
You guys all good with that?
Is it going to be in a work session?
We can do it in a work session and I can also put a placeholder in regular meetings should you have any actions or consensus that come out of the work session such as if you find, yes, we're going to agree to keep everything in gray for keeping the city charter, which we can continue to move forward on that. Similar to how we did this, we don't take any chunks, I can then place hold around the regular jacket too.
Thanks. With that, um, we've come to the end of the agenda. Does anybody have anything that they'd like to discuss or go in or comment on? Nothing? Okay.
You curious? Now that we're, hey, now. All that. There's going to be a time, there will be just put back, there will be back for general public. Not so, how you didn't be with the table table, the chair of the seat and then there was chair of the public.
My understanding that this configuration was done because some of the women viewed one another as the discussion happened. And so that was why the dais was removed. Some of the women raised it right now because if somebody wanted to come in person, we didn't have to call an arrangement that had.
So it is possible now if, if people from the public wanted to show up instead of getting on Zoom, they can't.
We would ask them to come for it because of the agenda items, just because of that room. So that way if somebody else wanted to come in, they would also make it a point that was equal for people to come in. So this again, just to be quiet. Yeah, hopefully did that. As you mentioned, things are literally what it's.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
We do adjourn.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.